Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Invited guests, in addition to those who are visiting us, we also want to acknowledge our city staff who are out in the audience. Want to acknowledge my colleagues on council, as well as our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our city attorney, Attorney Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. White. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for your patience. I would ask at this moment, at this time, that we all stand for a moment of silence. And before you stand, I want to say to everyone, recently, we had an act of violence against some police officers in our region. Officer Cameron Gervin and Officer Christopher Reeves in Virginia Beach. I would ask that during your moment of silence, you remember their families and pray for them at the difficult time, and pray for the city of Virginia Beach. Let us all stand.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would ask that all of my colleagues please note your presence electronically.
Five members of the city council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We have the minutes of a called meeting on February 10th, 2025, and a called meeting on February 11th, 2025, and a regular meeting on February 11th, 2025. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Move adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Would you please read the council speaker rules?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all matters should be, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of city council staff or the audience, and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
We've now come to the item of city manager's report on the agenda, item 25-61. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting dog and cat sterilization funds in the amount of $1,290 from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Grants Fund to support and ster, support a sterilization program for dogs and cats.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item, item 25-62. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for South Side Regional Hazardous Material Response Team.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-0.
Our next item, item 25-63. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting Community Development Block Grant Program income in the amount of $89,840, and Home Investment Partnerships Program income in the amount of $24,844.49, and appropriating said amounts in the FY 2025 Community Planning and Development Program Fund.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And under this item, we do have one speaker registered, item 25-63, and that is Ms. Donna Biggs. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
My name is Donna Biggs, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in Cherslin. Agenda item 25-63 recommends accepting a Community Development Block Grant Program income of over $89,000, and a Home Investment Partnership Program income of almost $25,000, and appropriating it into the Community Planning and Development Program Fund. In the budget book, there are a number of divisions or business units reported. They are Community Planning and Development Program, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Economic Development Department, Newport Community Development Authority, Permits and Inspection and Planning Department. Who was the one who asked for this money, and how was it determined to be used? There was a CDBG meeting at the neighborhood facility on Elm Avenue. Did any representatives attend this meeting? I want to know all the information concerning the request for this money, and where is it going to be spent? How are the people engaged to know how this money is to be spent? See all the delinquent payments of real estate taxes? What about these people who are unable to live under the taxation without representation here in Portsmouth? Who cares about the people who are struggling to live in this city? I need someone to meet with me and give me all the details I am asking for, and in the past, nobody responds to this patriot of Virginia.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-0.
And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $103,401.84 from the Virginia Department of Health through the Virginia Resources Authority, and one, appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 General Fund Budget, and two, transferring said amount to the miscellaneous water work category of the FY 2025 Capital Improvement Fund Budget for the development of a lead service line inventory and sampling plan by the Department of Public Utilities.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-0.
Thank you. Item 25-65. Please read the ordinance we are considering for this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $150,000 from the Virginia Department of Health through the Virginia Resources Authority, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 General Fund Budget for the development of a lead service line replacement gap analysis and action plan by the Department of Public Utilities.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-0.
Item 25-66. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting additional family preservation and support program funding in the amount of $599 from the Virginia Department of Social Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Social Services Fund for DSS to provide counseling, protective, residential, and transportation services.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Any additional discussion? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-0.
Item 25-67. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting additional 4E foster care funding in the amount of $50,000 from the Virginia Department of Social Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Social Services Fund for use by DSS.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-0.
Item 25-68. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing participation in the Department of Housing and Community Development Virginia Main Street Program by the City of Portsmouth as a mobilizing Main Street community.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have one registered speaker for this particular item, Ms. Donna Biggs. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Biggs, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in Cherslin. Agenda item 25-68, authorizing participation in the Department of Housing and Community Development Virginia Main Street Program. This program is about a preservation-based economic and community development program that follows the Main Street approach by offering a range of services and assistance to communities interested in revitalizing their historic, historic commercial districts. The Main Street approach may be applied successfully in other commercial settings. In the budget book, there are a number of divisions or business units reported. God's saying something. There are Community Planning and Development Program, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Economic Development Department, Newport Community Development Authority, Permits and Inspection and Planning Department. Who was the one who asked for this money, and how was it determined to be used? Next. How was the Historic Preservation Commission involved with this project and getting the money? We have a historic downtown. Is that money going to be used to restore the Civic Center and put the police back in it so that we can have the museum for the Historic Preservation Commission? To use it to tell the people's story of starting a form of government, other people, by the people, and other people? Stop paying rent to separate, separate all the police department divisions. Stop paying rent to separate all the community development departments divisions. Take out the asbestos in the Civic Center. Restore this historical monument to our official Coast Guard city. Take down our war flag and put up our flag of peace. We, the people, are the government. Represent the people in our public service areas, so we will build relationships and honor all those who have lived and died, to give the people our Bill of Rights and oversee the enforcement of them. Let us all communicate together and work together to do what God calls us to do, and not man.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-0.
That concludes our city manager's report. We are now moving into the new business portion of our agenda, item 25-69, boards and commissions. And Councilman Hugel, do we have any boards or commissions, sir?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, our next item is item 25-70, items submitted by council members. We do have a resolution that we need to adopt under this item, so I would ask at this time if Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
A resolution confirming a declaration of local emergency due to the threat of a major snowstorm impacting Portsmouth, Virginia.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this item? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick shout-out to all of the city staff that worked so hard through this most recent snowstorm. While a lot of us were home, hunkered down, watching the snowflakes fall, we had city staff out all across the city, clearing the roads, making the place safe, and, and keeping us safe. And so, to City Manager Carter and to the whole Portsmouth team, thanks to all of you for your hard work during this past week.
Are there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-0.
Are there any other items submitted by council members? Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Sorry, thank you, ma'am. I wasn't sure if this should be under pending items, but I did want to just, can I, this is an update from the lighting that the city manager provided regarding the lighting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted, we had in our last city council meeting, three citizens come and speak about just some of the concerns over lighting in our communities. And the city manager, thank you, City Manager Carter, for providing an update. So Dominion Energy is completing a, is about 44% complete with a citywide LED streetlight upgrades. They're expected to finish by the end of 2025. And after that, or I guess in concurrence with that, we will also be reevaluating areas that need to be upgraded to document malfunctions and also lighting gaps. So just wanted to provide an update and thank the city manager for providing that update report back from some of the concerns of our citizens about dark areas, unsafe areas in our community and our streets and improving that with additional lighting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things for the city manager. One, the stoplight at Victory in Elm Avenue, is there any update on that?
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Not at this time, sir. I've, I'll take that information down, make sure I speak to the traffic management department and see what's going on with that.
Okay. And Cedar Lane, I noticed that a couple of the below-grade manhole covers have been addressed, and it seems like the fix there weren't good, but there are still probably about another half dozen that need addressing. Is there any timetable for that?
Yep. That work is ongoing. The, the work you see that has been done is through a contractor that we've contracted with to actually take a look at all of those and take care of them. Probably within the next 30 to 60 days, all of that should be completed.
Terrific. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other items to be submitted by council members? I have a couple of items. Number one, I see Dr. Darlene Sparks-Washington sitting in the audience. She is the Executive Director of Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. We do have a special event that's coming up this Saturday, which was moved from last Saturday, which apparently, I think, was probably one of the coldest nights of the year. But in any event, this Saturday, we will be doing the Walk in Support of Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, the Coldest Night of the Year Walk. It will take place, we'll all convene at the plaza here, and we'll walk, I think, is it a 5K? Yes. We'll do a 5K walk, there'll be refreshments, good fellowship, we'll have an opportunity to come together as a community to raise funds for our most vulnerable citizens. And on behalf of the city council, I want to thank each and every one of you, the city of Portsmouth, Mr. Carter, and everyone who supported this worthwhile event. It goes a long way to help our citizens who are in need. The other thing I wanted to mention was, we have a retreat scheduled. The city council has a retreat scheduled, and each of you are invited, if you so choose to come. The retreat will be at the Newport News Conference Center in the city of Newport News. It will be March 7th and 8th. The event on Friday, March 7th, will begin, I believe, at 8:30 in the morning to 6:00 PM in the evening. And the session on Saturday will begin at 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. All citizens are welcome and encouraged to attend. If you want to hear about where your city is going and how we plan to get there, you are certainly welcome to be a part of that conversation. And, and I was just informed that we will not be having a city council meeting on March 11th. So just make note of that in, in, in your schedule. The last thing that I want to mention, because it is still African-American History Month, some would call it Black History Month, I want to share with you a story of one of our leaders in the city of Portsmouth, Dr. Elizabeth Daniels. Elizabeth Daniels, dentist, teacher, community activist, and school board member, was born September 23rd, 1938, in Sebastian, Florida. In 1966, she became one of the first elected members of Virginia's Portsmouth School Board. She earned her BS degree in biochemistry from Tennessee State University, her MS degree from Howard University, and her PhD from the University of California. In 1977, she received her degree in dentistry from the University of Connecticut School of Dental Medicine. Dr. Daniels served as vice chairman of the Portsmouth Public School Board. She had a long association with the Virginia Association of School Boards, serving on their Board of Directors from 2002 to 2007, and as their president in 2006. She was an active member of the National School Boards Association, National Black Caucus of School Board Members, and of the Council of Urban Boards of Education. In addition to her school board service, Dr. Daniels, a retired dentist, had also served as a middle and high school teacher in Portsmouth. She was committed to advancing quality public education. Dr. Daniels also served several years as a professor at Mahari Medical College of Dentistry in Nashville, Tennessee, over the course of her career. She passed away April 24th, 2014. Let's remember Dr. Daniels. That concludes our items submitted by council. We'll now move to item 25-71, report on pending items. Mr. Carter, do you have any pending items, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. In your reports back from the previous meeting, there are several items in there that you either as citizens or you requested, and we've responded to those. If you have questions or concerns about anything that's in that packet, please let me know. Also, I'd like to take this opportunity to announce the advertisement for our Government 101 program. That's going to start in March, March 31st is actually be the first date. However, the advertising is going on now. The registration for that will start on March 3rd, next Monday, at 12:00 noon. I'm anticipating that to fill up very quickly, that's why I'm telling you the time that the registration will actually open. It's going to be available to 25 cohort members of our community to spend some time with us every Monday, kind of figure, for us to engage with you and have ye learn more about how your, how your government actually functioned. So we're looking forward to having the members of our community participate in it, in that with us. Again, that program will start on March 31st. The registration will start on March 3rd at 12:00 noon. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Madam City Attorney, you have the floor.
I just wanted to also announce again that the city attorney's office is honoring Special Assistant City Attorney Bob Robert Marriage, who served the city for many decades through my office. Many of you may know him for his service through, through the permits and inspection and zoning enforcement. He also did dangerous dog cases. He was beloved. He was an icon. We are going to be honoring him at the Law Library at the main branch, public library here downtown on Wednesday, tomorrow, at 3:00 PM. We're donating his books that he gifted to us over the years to the Law Library and naming a shelf after him. So if you all wouldn't mind attending this honorary dedication to our friend Bob Marriage. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item 25-72, non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, would you please read the non-agenda speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe the basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. GW Thompson. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. City council, city manager, and city, well, city council members. My name is GW Thompson. I reside at 4065 Wyndham Brown Drive here in Portsmouth. I'm here on behalf of Virginia Organizing, a nonpartisan political action group. Also present tonight are volunteers from the Breakfast Feeding Program sponsored by Zion Baptist and Ebenezer Baptist Churches, which serves the homeless and other vulnerable individuals in our community. Also, I would be remiss if I did not mention that there are many other churches and organizations in Portsmouth and the surrounding areas which serve the most vulnerable in our community in so many ways. Also, there are some members of our homeless community with us tonight. Would all those who are here in support of our homeless issue, please stand. Thank you. Since our last city council meeting, we are encouraged by the progress the city has made in addressing this issue with the collaboration of the city manager, Dr. Washington of Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, Lieutenant Sherrod and Anna McCray of the Emergency Management Center, and other stakeholders who were involved in this Center, and other stakeholders who were involved in this process. We are encouraged by the following: the establishment of an overnight warming center at the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless Shelter, which was available during the snowstorm last week; increasing the capacity of the shelter from 20 to 27 to handle the overflow; the provision of meals by the city for the overflow; the establishment of a pickup point at the Department of Social Services last Wednesday between 12:30 and 1:00 PM; the establishment of a hotline that one can call to get shelter information; marketing this information on Wavy TV by Dr. Washington and on the city's and Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless website. If the above, Dr. Washington of Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless informed me that only one person took advantage of the warming station other than regular residents of the shelter. Since the city was engaged in the planning process and it was not finalized until next Thursday, last Thursday, several homeless individuals informed me they did not know about it. I found out about the new plan last Wednesday, and I proceeded to the Oasis where many of them eat lunch, but it was closed early because of the weather. I put up a sign. I talked with the director of Oasis, and she informed me that she was unaware of the warming station until Thursday. I went to the library, because many of the homeless use that as shelter during the day, and that was closed also. Dr. Washington informed me that they did receive a referral from the library. That day, I saw a couple of guys and shared information about the warming shelter. I would encourage continual collaboration with all the stakeholders who serve the homeless, including city agencies, nonprofits, and our faith community, so that the criteria for sheltering, pickup points, and times can be distributed in a timely manner, because there will be more weather events in the future. The use of electronic media is a great idea, but consider using print media to enhance the coverage of this population. Lieutenant Sherrod assured me that this will be an ongoing process to address this issue in our community to include all stakeholders who serve this population. Lastly, consider implementing a backup plan in the event there is an overflow at the shelter. Thank you, City Council, for your prompt attention and support of this issue.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Aaron Cody.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your service. My name is Aaron Cody, and my address is 2908 Tam Bark Lane. Last month, I described the problem that no one on City Council was elected with a majority of the votes. I said ranked choice voting is a method that can help solve this problem. There is another method, a runoff election. A runoff election occurs when no candidate receives a majority of votes. Typically, the top two candidates advance to a second election, which allows voters to choose minority representation. There are, however, four negative aspects to a runoff election. It costs the taxpayers more to conduct a second election. It demands much more of the voters, making them come out to vote a second time. It's also more work for elections officials to conduct a second election, and it takes longer to get the final results. Ranked choice voting is an instant runoff election. The method has the benefit of helping elect candidates with a majority of voter support without the negative aspects of runoff election. Ranked choice voting is an instant runoff election because voters may, but are not forced to, rank candidates in the order of preference: first, second, third, and so on. Because voters decide whether to mark additional preferences and how many additional preferences to mark, the power remains with the voters where it belongs. If a candidate receives a majority of the first preference votes, that candidate is elected. However, if no candidate receives a majority of first preference votes, the candidate with the lowest number of first preference votes is eliminated. And the voters who marked that candidate as their first preference have their votes counted still only one time toward their second preference instead. This functions exactly like a runoff election. And these runoff election rounds continue until a candidate receives a majority of the votes. In future presentations, I will discuss criticisms of ranked choice voting. However, in response to a comment made after my last presentation, ranked choice voting does not dump people's votes, and the method does not violate one person, one vote. With our current method of voting, every voter's vote is exhausted after the first round because there is only one round. If this results in no majority winner, too bad for us. We, the people, live with nonmajority representation. That's what we have right now. Do you know whose votes really didn't count in the last three City Council elections? The majority of voters who did not mark the winning candidates as their first preference. Their votes didn't count. With the ranked choice voting, the voters decide individually when their ballots are exhausted. Each last-place candidate is eliminated, but the votes are not. In other words, no vote is dumped. In fact, if a voter marked a next preference, that vote is preserved to contribute to a majority-winning candidate. In a runoff election, voters are encouraged to come out and vote a second time to determine a majority candidate. This does not violate one person, one vote. For Portsmouth City Council elections, each voter actually gets three votes, one for each seat. This also does not violate one person, one vote. It is more accurate to say the rule is one person, one vote, per seat, per election. With ranked choice voting, each voter's vote is counted once, and only once, to determine if there is a majority winner. Each round of ballot counting is a new runoff election with an updated slate of candidates. If a runoff election does not violate one person, one vote, neither does ranked choice voting. The main benefit of ranked choice voting is to help elect representatives with a demonstrated majority of voter support. My next presentation will be about the additional benefits of ranked choice voting. I am available after this presentation to answer any questions or listen to comments. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Yvonne Dotson. Ms. Dotson, if you would come forward, ma'am. State your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, City Manager, thank you, and City Council and staff. My name is Yvonne Dotson, and I live in the Park Manor area. There have been many rumors going around and questions being asked about the shooting on Sunday in the parking lot where I was attending a church service. So I wanted to come tonight to explain exactly what happened to me and to the church. I've been coming here for years now, for four years, with my husband, and I have heard and seen so many moms cry over the gun violence. I have seen so many people come up here and participate in telling y'all about the gun violence. But on Sunday, I was able to see the gun violence for myself, and it's not anything that I would ever want for anyone to have. About a year ago, I decided, after hearing all the gun violence, I decided to say, you know, we as citizens need to do something. It's not just City Council. It's not just the police. It's all of us that live in Portsmouth need to do something. And so I talked with Chief Jenkins, and I asked him, what can I do? And he gave me a name of a lady that is doing a program called Chain Breakers. And Chain Breakers goes into the public schools, and she and her organization, and her name is Ms. Frances Thomas Knight, and she goes into the schools, and she works with students that have not necessarily learned how to read, even as far as the fourth grade. And she works with them. She takes a week out of the school system. She works after school, and their group goes in and teaches phonics. To children that have problems reading. And, let me see, sorry. We've heard from the other group that was here tonight about the students that cannot read by fourth grade and by third and fourth grade, that they are either going to, statistically wise, they will either drop out of school or they will be incarcerated. And now, after talking with some of the school board members, I've been told that it's not even third and fourth grade now. It is actually kindergarten and first grade. And to me, that is just mind-boggling. So I asked Chief Jenkins what I could do. So I got in touch with Chain Breakers, and now I am volunteering for them, learning how to do what needs to be done to go into the schools. I'm also, she's asked me to be on the Board of Directors, so that's what I'm going to do, too. And I'm also working with Susan Hoover, who works at Simonsdale Elementary School, and I'm going to go in there and I'm going to read to the students. I'm going to do whatever I can. Those are things that I can do. But my question is, what is the City Council going to do? What are the citizens of Portsmouth going to do? Her husband had a celebration and a, the last Sunday of Black History Month, and she invited me to come, because I've been to her church before, and they have an awesome worship service. And so I went to celebrate him and to celebrate the last Sunday of Black History Month. They did a thing on Rosa Park, and as they were taking Rosa off the bus and handcuffed her, I heard bam 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 bam! And I thought it was part of the skit. And then I looked out the window, and I saw people running. And I tapped on the lady in front of me, and I asked her, I said, is this part of the skit? And she said, no, get down! And so we got down. But the bullets that came hit a car that was just three spaces away from where those precious children were, and adults, and me. It blew out the back of the window. It blew out a side window. And then when the police came, and I have to say, our policemen were there in 3.5 minutes after someone called, 3.5 minutes. But I looked out after they got there, and there was a cone that was six feet away from us. So I need some, I would love it if somebody would do something. I would love it that we would have safe streets again. But we have to do what we need to do, and I'm asking everyone here to do just one thing here, 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 anywhere. And I'm going to stay here, and if you want to volunteer for the Chain Breakers, if you want to volunteer for Dolly Parton Imagination Library that gives out free books every single month, I would love to have you come forward and volunteer. Just do one thing that will help Portsmouth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Ms. Dotson, I just want to say thank you for sharing your experience from this past Sunday. There, I know that wasn't easy. There was a few other members of the community that were very outraged that that happened at that time. There was another shooting the same day earlier that morning, and so thank you for coming to speak and to implore everyone, even if it doesn't have to be a big thing, just a small thing, to help curb the appetite and curb maybe even for the future generation. So thank you for coming to speak and sharing your experience. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Dr. Darlene Sparks Washington.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Moody, council members, City Manager Carter, members of the diocese and Portsmouth community. My name is Darlene Sparks Washington, and I serve as Executive Director for Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. I'm here to talk about two things this evening. Both of them are related to the recent snow event that we experienced. During the snow event, PVH supported the city in serving as a overnight warming center for individuals who were unsheltered. As someone with disaster preparedness and response and terrorism background, I want to commend Lieutenant Sherrod Doris and Fire Chief Magna Back for their support during that time. Lieutenant Sherrod actually served as our point of contact. And he and I began conversations months ago about inclement weather. The time to talk about what we're going to do when something happens is not when something goes boom, but it's in advance of that. So we already had preliminary conversations about that. When he's temporarily stepped into the role as Emergency Management Planner, he followed the playbook. And in following the playbook, what that allowed us to do was focus on sheltering. This is really an example of ways that municipality and nonprofit partnerships can be successful. So thank you all for that. The next topic is due to the history-making snow accumulation. PVH had to reschedule our signature Coldest Night of the Year 5K Walk and fundraiser. While the weather conditions were ideal, ideal, coldest night for that, pavement, roadways, and the pathways presented a potential hazard. Anytime there is a potential hazard, we're going to err on the side of caution, and we're going to protect the citizens who come out to support us. So our event was rescheduled to this coming Saturday, March 1st. Our registration portals remain open. So register a team, join a team, donate or plan to volunteer. As of this evening, we have 48 teams. We have 343 walkers, and we're very, I'm not going to tell you what the goal is, because then you might not come out. But, so, come out and walk with our Portsmouth family. I want to thank our sponsors, the City of Portsmouth, Grove Church, Bond Secure Hospital, Mary View, Food Lion, Starbucks, Chick-fil-A, Zeta Phi Beta, Sorority Incorporated Portsmouth Chapter, Shared Hospital Services, Found Ever, and New Creation United Methodist Church. Funding we raised from this and other events support our operational expenses. We moved from a six-week, I mean, a six-month shelter to now year-round night shelter. As you can imagine, that increases our expenses by at least 50%. So we have to fundraise in order to be able to meet the needs of our individuals in our community experiencing homelessness. We operate the night shelter, and we are very appreciative of Sheriff Michael Moore for allowing us to be at the facility. We operate day services, and that includes access to shelters, washers, dryers, HRT bus passes, documentation, allowing people to replace those photo IDs, their birth certificates, social security cards, and referrals for housing, securing their documents for housing and employment opportunities. So fundraisers like this are important for us to bridge the gap in terms of our expenses. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Coleman Young.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and City Manager and City Staff. I'd like to mention maybe three ideas. I also want to congratulate Ms. Graham Williams for being appointed to the chairship. I know they selected a very qualified and a conscientious individual. First, I'd like to say that we had, I'm glad to see we've got three new members of City Council, that, you know, there were many qualified people that ran. The citizens voted, and they selected them, and I wish them all the best. And I, you know, I know they will make sound decisions. And when you do make decisions, unfortunately, some people like it, some don't. And that's just unfortunately the price of being in the political field. And that's just unfortunately the price of being in the political field. And I leave one little phrase, dogs will bark, but the wagon keeps moving on. The second point is that I begin liking the employment enhancement. I know, I saw the video that Mr. Carter attended and also the Director of Human Resources, you know, Human Resources on selecting an Employee of the Month. It's enhanced and the recognition is great. You know, recognizing Employee of the Month is good, but there's also other employees. You know, the employees are the backbone of the city. They're, you know, you have, the city concerns about revenue. They, you know, want to have quality programs and services, but it's, the employees themselves are the ones that bring the success to the programs. I have a suggestion. I saw an interview with Steve Wynn, the owner of Wynn Resource, and he asked, well, how do you keep the morale going with your employees? He said, what he does, he has the supervisors get their employees together and say, what have you done? How you gone out of your way to help a customer, you know? And so, they share that experience. And then, from that, then it's gone to a central place and they choose who they're going to interview, and they do a little video of that, of what they did. And, you know, and then from that, you know, we all, we all want recognition, you know? Babies cry for it, and men and women die for it. And so, this gives a chance for the employees to have some recognition. And also, when someone shares the experience they had, you know, there's always another person saying, well, you know, I love that that person got attention. You know, let me look for an opportunity where I could help somebody. And then, the third thing is the pavilion. As you're aware, there's five events scheduled at the pavilion right now versus, and this is being managed by AMG down at Virginia Beach. The Virginia Beach Dome has 18 events scheduled. It's basically the same thing. They got an auditorium for 3,500, they got an amphitheater for 5,000. My concern about it, I called Robin, who's the contact person with AMG, and I asked her, well, how many musical acts do you have in the funnel? And she said, she didn't know. How many events were done last year, she didn't know? So, from that, I look at the pavilion like you own a piece of rental property. You hire a property manager to manage it. Right now, if you take during the warm months, from April, 1st of April till the end of October, that's 210 days. Out of that, you only got, at this point, you've got five scheduled events in that, in the pavilion. Then, you look at the revenue. The city paid AMG $250,000. Like any business person, when you put money out, you want to know how quickly you can get the money back. So, what is, what is the city's method of getting money back? They get $1,500 rent for every activity. They get the 6% tax, emission tax and sales tax. So, if you've had an event, you had 5,000 people there and $40 per ticket, okay, that's $200,000. So, out of that, that 6%, you get $12,000. You're going to have to have 12 events with that thing just to get your $250,000 back. The other point is, we're missing opportunity. People, okay, thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Sergio Neil. Mr. Neil, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Sergio Neil. I reside at 1420 Elm Avenue here in the City of Portsmouth. Somebody spoke to it earlier, but again, before I start, I wanted to thank the city for the job well done for clearing the snow last week. A lot of people are actually surprised at how quickly Portsmouth moved and responded to the event, making sure people were able to still get to work, emergency services were still able to operate, and other people that needed, essential personnel were able to get to work, which is very vital to the economy and the safety and security of this city. I was one of those people. I actually worked in the City of Norfolk, so it was really, I really appreciated the effort that was put into make sure that we had access to the highways and our main roads, able to get to work and keep people going. Secondly, I would also like to thank Councilman Taylor, who is not here right now. I received a letter in the mail from him last week just stating that he was basically listening and observing to what's going on when I spoke about the Apprentice Park neighborhood. And I also know that I've had other conversations with other council members who are paying attention, like Ms. Thomas, you know, for our lighting situation. I really appreciate that. You know, our neighbors are working really, really hard to try to make sure that we change the narrative in our community, and we will appreciate the feedback, the attention from our council, our city staff. I see Waste Management out there this morning, picking up trash along Duke Street, when I really feel like that helps us know that we are, that our input is valued by the city and there's a response to it. My main topic coming up there tonight was about accountability, right? Somebody spoke to it earlier, as far as, Ms. Dotson spoke to it earlier, as far as what do we do? How do we hold ourselves accountable for what is happening in our city? That is, to have two shootings in less than 24 hours, in less than six hours in the City of Portsmouth on Sunday, well, we had, and it looks, appears to me that these, the victims, as well as those accused of criminal activity, are all under the age of 30, which means that there's something, something wrong in this picture. If we continue to turn a blind eye, if we continue to close our ears to what's happening with our young people, we are in a state of emergency more than what we think. What can we do? Yes, you go to the schools, you volunteer. Yes, you get out in the community and you grab some kids. Yes, you start a youth recreation center, but there is more that needs to be done. Those that have came and put in the time and effort, the blood, sweat and tears, some with money, some without, some just, you know, making it as they go by to grab hold of our young people, to show them a different light, speaks volumes. However, you know, me as one person, I would say this to my neighbors, we need more people. One of us can't do it by ourselves. The same people can't keep doing it by themselves. We can't capture all the kids, whether you have five kids in your program, whether you have 500 in your program. We have to capture this group of young people early before they start getting out of control. Because I can tell you right now, just like Ms. Dotson said about reading, being unable to read in the kindergarten to fourth grade level, that's, that's an eye-opening situation because guess what? Those who don't, who can't get it at, by the time they hit fourth grade, they end up in our jails. They end up in our homeless population. So, if we can redirect that focus, we can redirect that energy before they hit that threshold of being, of falling between the cracks, we can save our city. Right now, we have to do more. We have to do more. So, anybody that's willing to step up, anybody that's willing, you don't have to be a big name because that's a misconception around here. You got to be popular. It's not a popularity contest. When we saving lives out here, it's not a popularity contest. We are doing this because we care about our city. We want Portsmouth to continue to improve. And I'm saying continue to improve because I can tell you right now, November 5th, 2024 proved a point in this city. People were tired of the same old, same old. So, that means it's time to keep on improving. So, I implore to our neighbors to please do whatever you can, get hold of our young people and save our city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Vic Nichols. If you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Vic Nichols, 1124 Mill Lake Quarter. I have several items for you tonight. One, the disabled ramp to City Hall, still not lit. I'm wondering what it takes to get that fixed. Is that a lawsuit, EEOC, or what? Just like to know. I do want to thank the City Manager for putting out the notes to the public that used to be for council only. I appreciate that very much. I would like to ask something, though, is that he used that for a place to praise city workers for what they do because obviously, if we've heard some people, they really appreciate what they did during the snow. And it would be nice to see that that's recognized. Something else that could be in there is what can be fixed. As you know, the popular perception of what Portsmouth is, that's a place that you could use as a springboard to say, we know we have problems, but you know what? We're looking at fixing them. We're looking at doing something about it. And that comes from the highest level. That speaks volumes. We need more lighting on Victory between Deep Creek Boulevard and George Washington Highway. It's around to the casino on the left. It's a little bit dark there. It might help if there was more lighting so that wouldn't be as many accidents. Another suggestion, if you can move closed session after the council meeting, works really well out in Chesapeake. Y'all can gum flap to your heart's content and not worry, have to worry about us coming back. I wanted to go back on an issue I had spoken about before, and that was about the concealed carry fees. In Albemarle County, at the Harris Teeter, a good guy shot the bad guy who was shooting other people. We've had a concealed carry garbage truck driver shot an armed robber. We had an armed mom that had a baby on her hip, gun on the other hand, and took care of three bad guys who shot at that baby she was holding. Fact is, criminals are going to do what criminals do. The murder-suicide of the mom and kids over in Chesapeake, she was prohibited from owning a gun. Didn't matter because criminals are going to do what they want. The other problem that we have, and the common theme that you see, is that it's the kids. They're basically getting told they're worthless, and they're acting that out. That's all they're doing because we're not giving them hope. Portsmouth has some of the worst schools in the area. We need that fixed. Let's try a little bit less working on the bad guys having guns and getting the kids to be able to read so that they understand that sports, criminality and music are not the only way out. For years, at one of the school board meetings, I would sit there and say, I would, the first thing I wanted to do is to honor African Americans, Hispanic Americans, minorities who achieve in the sciences, in law, in business. Well, that's obviously not getting through to the kids. And I do agree with reading to them alike, but you know what the other thing we need to do is tell them there is a way out. Because obviously, what they're being allowed to see definitely isn't that. Good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Merle Rutledge. Mr. Rutledge, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
I want to ask this question politely. I sent an email to everybody so we didn't have a failure to communicate as far as me asking the city to have a resolution in regards to our idea or concern to pass over to the General Assembly, which I found out the city does have the authority, so it is something the city can't do. I just want to make sure, am I allowed to present this idea that will probably stop crime and poverty?
Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. After school, we need to have a dinner program. Well, I used to come home from school with my mom. My mom made sure I did the homework first, then I ate before I went out to play. If we use the same idea, instead of just having the breakfast program, put a dinner program, so once they get out of school, they eat. When you eat, you think clearly. And we have seen major results with people's ability to learn. And the grandmothers and the mothers can all take turns helping out here. This is supposed to be a community and city engagement. I guarantee you, you have dinner after school, all those bad kids is going to be there for dinner. Now, here's the other resolution I would like for the city to take up. The end of poverty and the end of crime because poverty and crime connects. Now, in Richmond, the water was off, for example, and people said, we are surrounded by a body of water and nobody can have a drink of it for four days. Well, we are surrounded by gas and oil off the continental shelf, which the cities have a right to reserve. They're part in it. This will create generational wealth for every single citizen here in the City of Portsmouth and throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. My plans have been vetted by the Department of Defense. My plans have been vetted by the Department of Ocean and Geology and the rest of those, and the gas exists within three nautical miles outside this building. Now, extraction and using refineries to extract this gas will bring down gas prices for most people who are paying astronomical prices, whether it's heating up a home or putting fuel in your car. The fact is, leaders and more knew about this for the longest kind of time. Politics played a part. Portsmouth has a right, just like other coastal areas across Virginia that surround the continental shelf, the inner and outer, normally is known as the submarine can. So, for others who are not that familiar about it, this is a great opportunity to bring Portsmouth and Virginia to the modern times. Tax revenue from beyond everywhere. Pretty much, if we do this and the city ends up putting a resolution there, this is the perfect time to have the perfect leadership that's going to be all good with it. I guess hearing drill, baby drill, and hearing all of that, I think is worthy, given the situation, to research this because this could be energy independence for the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. This plan has also been compared with the ability to feed Africa. How did we get so much gas and never took the time to explore your own rights? Y'all represent the city. You do your research here, reserve your part in the future. Realistically, I doubt anybody is willing to stop you, especially given the fact that this exists and all the rights are from the states that surround the continental shelf, as well as the cities that can't actually also get their part by going to the federal government. So, I hope this idea do y'all well. And honestly, it's about time people got some relief and they got some bold leadership. And the bold leadership is right in front of us. At any timeframe, you can step up and do something great beyond measure. That's what citizens and councils for, to work together, to come up with solutions that help everybody, not just a select group or select race. So, I'm going to conclude.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speakers for the evening. I wish you all a safe and enjoyable evening. Until next time, take care and stay healthy. This meeting is adjourned.